Welcome, everybody. Again, thank you all for your patience. Just to preface, this is something that we're trying out for Buildings and Grounds. We're going to talk about the proposed capital referendum, and we thought it would be nice to have space where we can all sit and chat at the table and work through. With that said, if we can just all rise and pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here. Here. Trustee Daly?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Trustee Schwartz?
Yeah.
Okay. We're all here. Great. Before we begin, I just have two quick items that I wanted to discuss. First, at our last board meeting, we spoke about superintendent search and that Bosse's was going to be coming and presenting to us about the superintendent process. They did that at our retreat last week. It feels like forever, but it's only been -- (laughter) It was just last week, actually. And they did a great job. We were very pleased, and we're happy to announce that we'll be using Bosse's for the process. And stay tuned for the next steps. Secondly, I attended the inaugural Hall of Fame Dinner on Saturday night along with Dr. Bowers and Margaret, and I just want to thank all those that were involved in putting that night together, the committee, Chris Solomon. Thank you. It was an awesome evening. That sums it up, but it was terrific. It was great to see past teachers, past students, past lot of family.[135.56][135.56](laughter) So it was great. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So we are going to -- we're going to have a number of different parts of this meeting. The first part will be a discussion on the fact that this is School Board Recognition Week. The second will be a short presentation by our auditor for our district's audit. And then the third, we will invite the Building and Grounds Committee to come up and sit around the table with us, and we'll be talking about the proposed referendum. So to start, we would like to say thank you once again to our board members who dedicate an enormous amount of time and energy to the district. And I was thinking how unusual it is to say that we've had the same five people on the board for the last three years. And that's an unusual circumstance. Usually you have people coming and going often, and so it's been -- the continuity's been very helpful. So we want to thank you for all your time. And there it is. So we thought this year we would do something a little different, and we actually bought a brick that will be placed. And it says, "Thank you to the 2017 Haldane Board Members for their dedication."
That's really nice.
And so it will be memorialized in our -- with our little -- with all the bricks that are going in, and so we really appreciate it, but we want it to be public, that we believe that you give so much to the district. So this will be installed pretty soon, I guess.
(laughter)
Yep.
That is -- instead of an umbrella, you've got a brick.
Thank you. So do you want to take a break now for some snacks? Do you want to start and then maybe take a break midway? How would you like to do that?
I think let's keep on trucking.
Yeah. I know. Yeah, have a little bit of travel time after, so.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll do that midway?
That's great. So we have some goodies over there, so we'll stop maybe before we go to the Building and Grounds.
Sure.
Okay. Good. Okay, to say thank you. Okay. So Ann, would you like to invite your -- Mr. Walther up?
Sure. The -- we completed our 1617 external audit, and Mr. Alan Walther from Bonadillo and Company is here to give the presentation for that audit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the mic on?
Yeah.
Okay. Just to introduce myself again, my name is Alan Walther. I'm a partner with the Bonadillo Group. We are the school district's external auditors. As Ann said, we have recently completed the audit of the school district's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2017. I came down, I think it was last week or the week before. I have one of these meetings every single night this time of year, so I lost track. But I came down and met with the audit committee, reviewed the financial statements in detail with them, and tonight I'd just like to give a brief overview of the results of the audit for the full board. Can't hear me well enough. So our role as your auditors is really twofold. We audit the financial statements, and we give an opinion on your financial statements, and we also consider your internal controls and give a report on your internal controls. The reports that we issued are an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. That's the highest level of assurance we can give on your financial statements. With regard to the school district's internal controls, we noted no material weaknesses or no significant deficiencies, again, which is the highest level of assurance we can give. And with regard to compliance with laws and regulations, there were no instances of non-compliance that we reported. So overall, very favorable audit report. Some of the highlights for the board to be aware of, I'm going to limit my comments mainly to the general fund. That's the primary operating fund of the school district. When we talk about the budget, we're talking about the general fund. The highlights here, the general fund, fund balance at the end of the year was $4.378 million. Of that fund balance, $645,000 was applied to the 2018 budget. That was the amount that she used to balance this year's budget. Your unreserved fund balance was less than the 4% limitation of New York State. The school district had a net $1.7 million favorable variance versus its budget. In the school lunch fund, the deficit has been reduced to $23,000 due to a general fund subsidy. Our expectation is for 2018 that school lunch fund will have a positive fund balance. And the capital project fund shows a $1.5 million deficit. That's just a result of the way that the accounting works with the bond anticipation notes. As the bond anticipation notes are redeemed, the capital project fund deficit will be eliminated. We also audited the extra classroom activity funds, issued a qualified opinion on those reports as well. Any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and thank you to the committee members, Evan and Margaret, and especially Ann Dineo, for another great year. So that's all that I had. Does anybody else have any?
Well, just some from the committee. First of all, it's a great committee led by Tom Campinelli, whose letter we'll accept. Just, we really highlighted what he said. The first thing he said was highest level of assurance that they can find. That's not to be overlooked. That was a pretty big deal. No compliance issues, so congratulations to Ann and the whole district office. One of the suggestions we made was, and Ann, I think we might have even set it up already, was training for the advisors, the club advisors. We did it a couple of years ago, and we suggested to just redo that again. So we're going to set that up.
Yes, yes. Yeah. Ann and I just spoke about that. We'll get that arranged.
Yeah. So, and last time we had it, they said it, they looked at it very favorable. So it was good.
Yes, and I also do want to thank Tom Campinelli publicly. Unfortunately, he was not able to be here this evening, but also thank you, Tom, for all your hard work and efforts. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay. So maybe --
Take five minutes and --
We'll take five minutes, and then we'll --
Grab yourself a snack and then come back. And anybody on the Building and Grounds Committee, if you would like to come up and join us, we would appreciate that.
Provide their reports, so that if you'd like, you can stay. If not, you can leave and do it all over again tomorrow. So we'll start with Ms. Silke.
Good evening, everyone. On last Friday in September, the eighth grade class visited the West Point Foundry Preserve. This trip was arranged by Ryan McConville, the eighth grade team leader, and the eighth grade teachers. It was a very informative experience for the eighth grade, and a big thank you to Mr. Thatcher, who was the volunteer tour guide as well. Last week, the student council held their elections. Impressive campaign speeches were prepared by the candidates. And big congratulations to our middle school student council members. Rowan Lacasio McLoughlin for president, Shay DeCaro for vice president, Roy Smith for secretary, Madison Chiara for treasurer, William Bussell for -- William, sorry. William Bussell for sixth grade class representative, Amanda Johnson and Mairead O'Hara for seventh grade class representatives, Molly Siegel and Luke Perella for eighth grade class representatives. Last week, the seventh grade class visited Long Dock Pond in Beacon for interdisciplinary education experience. They moved through six stations that were designed to collect and study data about the Hudson River. The trip was made possible via collaboration between the riverkeepers, Sina Hudson, and the seventh grade teachers. A special thank you to Heidi Gessen, the seventh grade team leader, for organizing the experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallach?
Good evening, everybody. I had submitted to you for this meeting just a kind of a bullet pointed list of some of the highlights going on at the elementary school, but I just want to focus on one of them. I mentioned that we're trying to do everything we can to increase cross-grade partnerships, feeling that it's really both important and beneficial for students to be able to work with students of different ages and different grades. So naturally, you think of the easiest one as older children reading to younger children, which of course happens, but we also have younger children reading to older children, which is a really interesting thing, just to watch and watch how the older elementary kids care about the younger elementary kids, you know, like our first graders, as they're really practicing out some of their reading skills that they're just learning, and that's something that's really nice to see. We have other multi-grade groups in our school where we're going to be having our student council elections on November 7th. It seemed like a good day for an election.[753.12][753.12](laughter) And that obviously involves third, fourth, and fifth graders. Mrs. Spooner is the teacher who's in charge of that program. We also have a Karen community that's put together by Mrs. Curry, our social worker, and that's also a multi-age thing. We also have students helping students in other grades with science projects. And for example, there was a picture that I just took last week that was kindergarten students who had learned weather facts as part of their science curriculum, going in and presenting them to fourth graders, and standing in front of a classroom with a classroom of 20 or so fourth graders listening to them. And it's just wild to see, and it really, you know, they're young children, but it helps them for things that they're going to be doing both later on in school and much later on in life. So we'd like to give them those experiences, and they enjoy it, but it's also really beneficial for them, too. So I just wanted to share that with you tonight. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon, or?
Good evening, everyone. My first announcement is actually from Mrs. Sniffin. She cannot be here tonight. She's at a Bosse's training. But she wanted to congratulate Amelia Hall for being recognized as a commended student in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Mrs. Sniffin also would like to congratulate Kiefer Confortino for also being recognized as a semifinalist in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Kiefer will continue to move on in the process towards the Merit Scholarship Award. So those are just a quick couple announcements from Mrs. Sniffin. The first thing I'd like to do is just thank everyone who attended homecoming. This is my third homecoming here at Haldane, and I think this was the best one yet. The pep rally on Friday was an awesome experience for the students. Special thanks to Kristen Paparo, Marilyn Granisi, Joe Vergidamo, Eddie Crowe for help organizing our events and running the pep rally. Friday night, the homecoming game for the football team was well-attended, so thank you for coming out. We had our first Haldane Athletic Hall of Fame class inducted this weekend, so I wanted to thank Dr. Bowers, Laura Hammond, and Margaret Parr for attending. We had about 140 guests that spanned generations of Haldane athletes and teams. Our first inductee was from 1937, and our most recent was from 2008. So we had a broad range of generations, and it's hard for me to put into words how special this ceremony was, but once again, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming and supporting such a special event. Also want to thank the Booster Club, the Football Association, the Soccer Association, the Volleyball Association, the Putnam County Sheriff Department, the Cadets Program, Deputy Johnson, and Paul Piazza, as well as all the volunteers who helped with homecoming. Homecoming truly is an event that takes the entire community, and although we are a small town, we come out in large numbers. So thank you to everyone who helped support coming and made it a great weekend for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you for the Hall of Fame, the dinner. If you guys haven't watched the video from the Hall of Fame Dinner, it was -- oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. The video from the --
There we go.
It really covered the -- it made you so proud to be a Blue Devil.
And I think this is one of these events that started out where I went in with absolutely no expectations at all, a clean slate. Chris hit it out of the park. It was an incredible night, and it will become one of those events that begets bigger and bigger every year. I mean, the recipients were going up, and they were tearing up to receive the awards. Everyone there was so proud to be a Blue Devil. And the footage, if you haven't watched the video, was incredible of not only when these people were at Haldane, but their experiences afterwards at Haldane, after Haldane, and their athletic accomplishments. And it's really worth whatever it was, 18 minutes or whatever to --
About a 20-minute video.
Yeah, to watch, to sit down and watch it. The Blue Devil pride is really there. So thank you, Chris. I know it was a lot of work for you and the committee, but it really, really, you hit it out of the park.
And thank you. And that video is available. It's both on the main page of the district website and the athletic page. So if you have 20 minutes, I definitely think it's worth watching, and thank you for the compliment. One more announcement that I forgot. This Sunday, October 22nd, we have a walk-a-thon to help raise money for breast cancer awareness. The event was organized by Haldane Junior Ashley Haynes and the Booster Club and Tennis Association. It's going to be at our turf and our track from 8:00 AM to 6:00, so please come down. We'll have our freshmen's t-shirts. It's going to be a great event for the community, and it's for a great cause. So if you're available and have time, please come and support a great cause by one of our Haldane athletes. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Shaw?
Evening, everybody. Two quick items. One is that building off the work of our special ed program review that we reviewed in the last workshop, I continue to deepen our training opportunities for our aides and teaching assistants. I'm actually going to push into their monthly meetings myself at Buildings, as well as our speech and language pathologists will start doing some training on autism spectrum disorder and also on being aware of speech and language issues amongst our general education classrooms, so they can be sort of our frontline and first eyes and ears when it comes to articulation and pragmatics, so that they can assist the speech and language pathologists in making timely interventions for our students, even at the very youngest ages. And speaking of our Buildings, deepening our work with Building Student Agency, both academic and social-emotional for our students. Mr. Wallach and Ms. Silke are going back to Bosse's for the second of how many?
Second of four.
Second of four workshops on Ruler Training, which is the social-emotional well-being and emotional intelligence training from Yale that's now in partnership with Putnam Northwest Chester Bosse's. So as the new principals, they're undertaking that learning that I took on last year with Sarah Graham, one of our learner profile teachers. And speaking of learner profiles, Dr. Yellen will be returning on October 26th to do the second in a series of workshops with me, our psychologist, our learner profile teachers, and some of the other staff, in developing, like I said before, academic agency for our students by building in sort of a more intensive intervention of the version of a learner profile. So that's my two updates, one from the report and one extra.
Thank you.
So that's a good reminder for us, because now the high school student council elections have been completed, right? And we said that that was kind of the stepping stone before the board --
Right.
Okay, what you're calling that.
And I've seen it on every day.
For students.
Right. Every day, it's been on the high school announcements. Anybody interested in becoming a board member representative, please let Mrs. Sniffin know. I'm not sure what the response has been, but I've seen it on the announcements.
I thought it was going to be a student council student. Am I incorrect? Am I reading that wrong?
Well, we were thinking it was going to be a student council representative. I'm not sure, unfortunately. Ms. Sniffin is not here to help us out with this, but she -- it's been on the announcements every day, I think.
It wasn't necessarily going to be a student council representative, because we wanted to actually, my memory is that we wanted it to be open, so there wouldn't necessarily be a student who was on the student council. I think the plan was definitely to work with the administration to make sure that the person identified seemed to like it would be a good fit with the board responsibilities, but we recognize that it might -- who, the person who might want to be a student board representative might not be somebody who is, you know, on the student council or has other activities.
Were we waiting until they were elected, though, for some reason? Am I wrong about that timeline? I thought we had said that.
Initially, that was the initial concept. I'm not sure anyone from that --
It's morphed a little bit.
Right. I think so.
I see. Okay, that's fine. That was just a marker for me. I was like, okay, I'm going to remember when the student council elections are announced.
And usually when it's on the announcements more than one time, I'm going to say that there hasn't been anybody that has truly stepped up.
I see.
But again, Mrs. Sniffin can fill us in when she's here. Please feel free to, you can stay, you can go. But have a good -- night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night. Night. Okay, so we're kind of a little bit out of order, but I think now would be a good time to jump back to the discussion about the potential bond referendum. Maybe we should start with discussion about the, do you think we should start here and then move into Ann's presentation?
Well, we were talking about it earlier, and we thought we would give kind of the overview and their components, and then really talk about, once we've kind of framed it, then talk about what we actually have that's on the list. And invite our Building and Grounds members and our leadership team who are here tonight from the Building and Grounds and the Maintenance Department. There's a whole lot of history here, and they know the building like the back of their hands, so they can help us with some of the questions. And again, if anybody in the audience would like to come up and join us at the table, there's seats, and you're welcome to be part of the discussion. So I would like to introduce three people who are from our Building and Grounds team. Gary is going to be, is filling in for the first three months of the year as our interim director of Building and Grounds and Transportation. And this may be something that becomes a permanent situation, and so right now, we're kind of all learning about how we can do it together. Michael Sikatis is going to be also serving in the leadership capacity for maintenance, and Tony Stronconi for grounds. So we thank you very much for being here, and you can help us with all of the conversations. And as I said, you're the historians that are going to help us through this process. So the way we're going to present this tonight, there are a number of different things that we thought was really important to introduce to you tonight at this point in the discussion, to really talk about what has happened, what kind of conversations we've had recently, how we would, if we are to have a bond referendum, how that would roll out, what types of things we would need to agree on before we brought it to the public for a vote, what are the steps when that occurs, how would we finance it, what are we presently financing, and how would that kind of roll into it? And Ann's created a PowerPoint presentation that I think will answer most, if not all of those questions. So I'd like to introduce Ann Dineo and her wonderful PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you. I'll just point out real quick that I know we're going to refer to this document later and go over it in detail. I may refer to, this is the spreadsheet of the facilities issues, and they're categorized into Phase 1, which is what we're going to kind of boil down to the potential capital referendum. We'll go over this in detail, but during the presentation, if I refer to the spreadsheet or the capital project list, this is the one that I'm talking about. The presentation and this list are on board docs. I'm also going to have the slides up on the screen, so if you can't see that.
And there are extras here, if anybody has an interest.
So just to go over the capital project timeline, like I said, this is on board docs, or you can look up at the smart board on the wall to follow along. So capital project from start to finish is not a simple process, but I've tried to tease out the items that just might help people wrap their head around, you know, where we are in the process. Initially, a construction plan is created, and that is what we're doing with this spreadsheet, is we're zeroing in on a construction plan. We're talking about what we want in the capital referendum that will ultimately, if it plays out as planned, will be presented to the voters in May of 2018. There are some initial things that happen during the development of the construction plan, and they're, and these items cost money. For instance, some architect fees, some evaluations, there's some testing that may need to be done. And these items are paid for by the general fund, and if the capital referendum is presented to the voters and it passes, then the general fund will be reimbursed by the capital project, and these fees will become incidental costs of construction. So they'll be part of the capital project. Should the capital referendum not be approved, these expenditures will be general fund expenditures. The money will be expended from the general fund and not reimbursed by any capital project, because there won't be a capital project. So I just wanted to point that out, that there are startup costs, that there's a risk that they will just become expenditures should we not go forward with the project. So after an approval by the voters, we're estimating May of 2018, so I need, because I needed some type of starting point. Plans would be submitted to SED in October of 2018. The gap is that there are forms that need to be filled out. The architect would need to develop plans and blueprints and send these to SED. Upon SED approval, which could be the spring of the following year in 2019, specs would be sent out to bidders, and construction would begin after the contracts are awarded to the lowest responsible bidders. So that's basically the time, the initial steps of a capital project.
I just want to point out, for those in the audience who may not know, SED is the State Education Department, and they have to approve the project.
Thank you. Sorry. I just, no, that's all right. I just, you know, sometimes it's, I just think everybody's speaking the language that I speak every day.[1733.04][1733.04](laughter) Thanks, Laura. One of the questions is how do we pay for construction costs? The contractors, as soon as they start building, there's different phases that they'll submit expenditures for, and they're going to want to pay. They're not going to wait till the end. How do we pay for these things? So we have reserve funds that we have set aside, and going forward, hopefully, we're still always in a healthy spot so that we can still fund reserves next year and the year after. If there are any gifts and donations associated with the project, those would be thrown into So we have reserve funds that we have set aside and going forward, hopefully we're still all, always in a healthy, um, spot so that we can still fund reserves next year and the year after. If there are any gifts and donations associated with the project, um, those would be thrown into, into the, um, the mix. And debt proceeds. The district would initially issue a ban, which is a bond anticipation note. It's a short-term, um, like a short-term bond. It's a note that we would float. It's for one year. Bands are renewable for five years. That's the longest that you can renew the one-year note and then you would have to bond. So we would take the proceeds of those debt instruments and pay for the construction costs right off the bat as, as soon as the project is underway. After the project is complete, it could take one to two years, um, sometimes more if there's a punch list and there's items that, you know, could drag out to, to just, uh, for completion. A final expenditure report is submitted to SED. The state aid payments start the following fiscal year as building aid after the state education department approves the final expenditure report. And your debt service amortization schedule, which is paying off your bonds, should match the state aid payment terms. And state aid, um, the state education department dictates this, um, that it's 15 years for renovations, 20 years for addition, 30 for new construction. What we're considering would be in the renovation category, we would receive aid over 15 years. So we're going to want to make sure that our debt is structured so that we pay back our aid over 15 years. We don't wanna, you know, run out of aid and then you have a, a big bill to pay with, with no revenue coming in or limited revenue coming in. So after, whether it's a note or a bond, there's an annual debt expense in the general fund budget. There's bond principal and interest payments that are in, will be in the general fund budget. And how do we pay for that? We pay for that from state aid on the revenue side. It's gonna, we're gonna have increased building aid.
And the percentage on that now is 37, 38% for the state aid?
I was still working on the 34 that.
34, okay.
34%. Some of the, um, expense will just be offset by retiring debt that's in the general fund budget. The difference for the balance of the debt payments would be an increase to the budget. So you have revenue coming in to pay for some of that expense. You might offset some of it with decreasing debt and the rest would be an increase. Any questions so far? Okay. Bless you. The financing timeline is, um, after the referendum is voted on in May of 18 and the documents go up to the state education department, we get the okay, we send out the bids. We're gonna wanna ban at the end of that year if we think that we're going to do work in the summer of 2019. We're gonna wanna, um, have our money to be able to pay our vendors. After that, we can renew the ban. I'm sure ban in year two would be something that would happen. Starting in year three, I would have to watch the market closely and if the interest rates go up or there's other factors that would happen whenever our state aid might kick in, I don't know what, really when the project would be finished or when the final expenditure report would be submitted to SED, between years three and five would be the time to bond instead of renewing a bond anticipation note. And that would just have to be an annual, an annual watch on the market and also where we are with our state aid reimbursements. Let me see if there's anything that I, no, that's it. That's all that I wanted to, to say on that. This graph shows our current and our proposed debt service. At this point, the graph does not include any reserves. This is strictly if we're not going to, to use reserves, what our debt would look like. The blue part of the bar is current debt. The orange lines are extending what the proposed new debt for the proposed referendum would be. Now in, let's see if I can do this, in 20 to 24, those are bond anticipation notes. And if you look at in 2024, you see this drop in the blue line? That is where some of our current debt is paid off. This reflects state aid payments of the 34% or those bars would be even higher. And also, since I had to pick a number in order to, to get the, the graph because, um, you know, it's not a variable, you just had to pick a number, so I, I chose $5 million because based on some of the conversations that we've had on this schedule, it seemed like it would be at least $5 million between the elementary bathrooms and the repiping of the whole heat delivery service. That being said, if there, if the goal is to have no tax impact, we would need about $730,000 during the bond anticipation note phase, that five-year phase. We would need $2,215,000 of reserves before we bonded. That would mean that the drop, right there again, from between 24 and 25, that drop will cover $2,300,000 worth of the project at no tax impact. So I don't know if I confused everyone with all of those, the different numbers, but, um, 'cause I know there's different categories and the different colors and that. But in, just to put it in another way, $2,300,000 could be, um, bonded at no tax impact. Okay, so $2.3 million of the project. If we bonded in 2024 or 2025 in that timeframe, when the old debt drops off, there wouldn't be an increase to the budget because it would just be replacement debt. So, and this is at current market. Again, this is in 2024. It's, you know, seven years away. I don't know what the market is going to be like, but using the variables, um, that we're experiencing right now, this is, uh, what I offer you as far as, uh, the financing.
Can I just restate what I believe you just said?
Mm-hmm.
Please. Just wanna make sure I, I understand it. So what you're saying is if we came up with a bond referendum that totaled approximately $2.3 million, you think we could probably do that as a tax-neutral project?
That would be tax-neutral. If the bonding occurred in 2024, you would still need $730,000 in reserves during the ban timeframe when our, because the blue lines, um, that's a given. We can't refinance, we've already refinanced this debt and you get one time at it. We got lower rates on this already. These are the old bonds from the high school. So the part of, the orange part of the line between 2020 and 2024 is about a $730,000 expenditure for bands.
Are you, is there a way to come up with that $730,000 that's not about increasing taxes?
We have money in.
You have it in our reserves?
We have it in the reserves. So, um, as of June 30th, there were, there was just over $300,000 in the capital reserve and there was $672,000 in the repair reserve. So that's just under a million dollars in reserves. So out of the three that you would need, the 730 in reserves for bands and the 2.2 million in reserves to keep it tax-neutral, we're a third of the way there. There's a million dollars already in reserves for this.
And so then the second part of that, uh, statement would be anything that we, uh, to approximately, if we created a bond referendum that was approximately more than $2.3 million end up, we would be needing to consider a tax increase?
That's correct.
And you've already included the, the state aid?
The state aid is already, um, netted out of this, this graph.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
Can I just add something to that?
Sure.
From what I understand, we won't know what the tax increase is when you're voting for the referendum. It'll be a long time before that's even defined. I mean, you were saying, it sounds like seven to nine years before you even know what the tax increase is.
That's tricky.
Can I ask one question, too?
And when you threw out that $5 million number to, to put this into a thing, was that highest end, was that probable or was that minimum?
It's what we decide on.
Right, but if, the $5 million that you, that you used for this, was that a, like, how did you come up with the $5 million? Did, was that, all of these things added up?
Just on the top. It, it was close to, um, what I believe, everything that's in phase one from the estimates that we had, we talked about.
So it's, so it's everything?
Everything in the top.
Almost all of that is in the top.
A lot of it is.
Okay, but it's, but it's everything, so.
In phase one.
But we're whittled down pretty far already, right?
Everything in the first group.
Okay.
It's not the full page.
Okay.
Here's phase two possible stuff. And phase one isn't even all completely decided on.
So one of the other things that we should also consider is when we do bond, we are bonding, um, as a public entity and there are, there are certain, um, benefits you get as a public entity when you borrow money. The other is that because our rating is so high, um, our interest rates are relatively low and we're hoping that that continues, obviously, as we go through the next many years, but that's something that's, it's, it's more stable as a public entity as, than it would be as a homeowner doing the same thing. So anything you wanna add with that?
That's the end of.
Okay.
Can I just add one more? Which was, the beginning of your presentation, when you talked about the timing, you know, a lot of these are immediate needs. So, I mean, we're still looking at not even starting work for more than a year.
Correct.
Yeah, at least a year and not more. So, um, we're going to move to the chart now. And so we'll talk a little bit about, um, what we're looking at. And we, we have been discussing some of these items for, um, probably close to a year at this point, when we've been looking at some of the things that we really need to consider in a bond referendum. And we have people that really have an idea of what needs to be done. You were talking about the pipes, Adam, and I can tell you that they are the lion's share of the cost and it will be. It's also, um, one of the greatest needs, but we will be looking at having another assessment done just so we know exactly what we're looking at. And, um, we were at one point thinking of doing a demographic study, but we do think we need to bring somebody in and, and do some type of, of assessment. So we're assured that we understand what's going on right now.
No, we don't know, I mean, obviously, a lot of people here are in these meetings.
Can you just grab the mics?
I don't know if every, if everyone here appreciates that first-line item and what's happening, 'cause the, these notes and explanation don't really explain it. So when the original building was built, 1934, it was heated with steam. Later additions were heated with hot water. When the boilers were replaced in 2012, they replaced all hot water. And there is a heat exchanger in the electrical room that is converting from hot water to steam. That steam now goes into the original pipes that is heating, um, the original building. Those pipes are failing. Where they're embedded in the wall, they are corroding from the outside in and they're leaking. And if we lose heat, we lose a large portion of the school. And the, the rate of failure is, is increasing as it's being monitored. So, you know, it's, it's concerning because, you know, no heat, no school. And here when it talks about conversion and stuff, this is really, the conversion is, we're not really converting it, we're fixing it. The cheapest way to fix it is just to extend the hot water system into the classroom and abandon those steam pipes.
That's right. So basically about 10 years ago, as we've discussed before at, uh, board meetings, there was an analysis of the, um, heating system, not necessarily the piping structure. This is where the boilers, um, were replaced about 10 years ago. That was part of that study. So when it was presented, uh, that report was presented, it didn't really have much, um, reporting about the pipes, per se. I think, um, Mike, Tony and Gary can all give, uh, some sort of testament as to, um, how the pipes are failing, where they're failing. But I think it's the board's due diligence to get another, um, full report and so we can truly understand. But maybe somebody can explain, Mike or Tony.
The piping is definitely failing. Last year alone, I had, uh, four separate areas that just rotted in the walls. It was bad. So basically, I mean, we're gonna have more breakdowns. I, I think this place is an accident waiting to happen. You know, it's, it's gonna get worse.
And could you just explain what's happening? It's the corrosions of where the metal's hitting the concrete, um.
Yeah, everything's just, it's just rotting apart. I mean, I still have some of the piping that I took out last year. I saved it. It's, it's just, it's failing bad.
Most of it was from the outside in where it went through the floors.
Right.
But there was that one under the, uh.
But, Tony, if you could.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, under the bleach, under the stage that I spoke about, that I found that it's not going through anything. It rotted right through the bottom of the pipe and took all the insulation right off it. So there, we have two cases going on. We don't know where them horizontal pipes have puddled water, puddled steam and are rotting from the inside out, which most of that is in the roof. And the ones that are going through the floor and the concrete, they're from the outside in. So it could happen from either direction.
Can you talk about what a further assessment, uh, would mean? So is that like infrared scanning? Like how does one get inside to do that further assessment that we're talking about maybe needing? Somebody, no?
I don't think that they could get to everything. I think they could assess what they could see and we could get a ballpark figure, but I, I don't think it's gonna be accurate as to what's really going on in the walls. And that's where we had the problem.
And, and you're right, they would actually go in, they would make small holes, go into it, use scopes to look at the pipes that they can get to. And that's about what we would be able to do.
I mean, I'm not testing stuff, I don't know how exactly they would do it. My experience here, use something like infrared.
Sorry.
They would use something like infrared that may pick up where the pipes are corroding from the outside in and then maybe a fiber optic camera snake down the line to see what's going on inside the pipe. But it's, you know, it's costly, it's time-consuming, you know, we're not doing it during the heating season. Well, you could do the infrared, but you probably wouldn't snake it. But it's, you know, I have to explain, I, I've been involved in the management and ownership of millions of square feet of real estate. of millions of square feet of real estate. This is really alarming and concerning. And, you know, I mean, it'd be my preference that it was addressed at a much faster timeline. The problem is it's expensive. But, you know, it, it is urgent.
So, on, on the chart in the second column down, what we were able to do is pull the two thousand six pre-bond evaluation regarding the heating and the cooling. And then we cross referenced it with what was in there and what we already had on the list. So you can see the things that were in the first report that correlated with what we're seeing now and you can have an idea of what was cross referenced. And if we have a new assessment done, that will happen again. But I think we're, at this point, everything we're seeing is leading us to understand what the needs are. But ultimately, we're doing this to make sure we have a safe and warm and energy efficient place for our kids to learn and to go to school every day. And so this is really to, to make sure that we provide for them the best facilities that we can and to make sure that they have the ability to be here every day regardless of the season. And so it's, it's, it is an urgent matter. Diana?
Can I ask a question?
Can you come up?
Yeah. So, what I don't, it's awkward.
You can actually go to that mic if you prefer.
I did. So, what I don't understand is if we know the pipes are failing based on what has happened so far, what we've seen so far, and we know that they're corroding, I don't understand why we need another, another assessment, which would just delay and confirm yet again what we already know.
Well, I don't know if we necessarily are talking about delaying it. There may be some people that aren't totally convinced at this point and we want to do our due diligence for them. But we are already moving into the development of the bond. And so, this is all going to be happening simultaneously, but we'll be just, we'll be able to give more information. And so, we are looking at the, at this point, the architect that will be joining us for the process, we're bringing this to the second building and grounds. We're not going to wait for that assessment. That assessment will come in as we are developing it. We do believe that we have an issue with the pipes. We have our experts telling us that that's the case. We want to make sure that we don't run into any bumps in the road with educating our kids and we provide for them what we need to. And we're going to do it all at the same time. We know that, that the timing is such that it really has to be done that way, especially if we want to hit the May deadline, if that's what we choose to do. You're welcome.
So there's a number of things on this phase one list that don't have prices associated with them. Would it, what would be the process for determining the, is that the bringing in the architect and others? So in addition to having someone, and again, just to reiterate that, you know, we all have been talking about and recognize that the buildings and staff, the buildings and ground staff really see a real urgency with the piping, but to make sure, our goal is to make sure that everybody in the community, that it's as transparent as possible and we can convince people of the need so there's not a delay, you know, in, in voting in the bond referendum. So in addition to that?
I just would like to just say that the, the dollar values that are here are, are real estimates.
But there are a bunch of estimates that aren't there.
Right. And so, but I also want you to, to realize, even though we have a dollar value, it's certainly not a finalized.
Oh, those are estimates. I see. Okay. So there's a whole thing.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the pipe project is listed as three to four million dollars. That's a big difference, three and four.
So there would be then a plan, so that gets to what Ann was talking about and talking about the expenses that are going to be incurred in order to develop the construction plan that we put before the public. That would be hiring, bringing in people to come in and make bid, more accurate bids and estimates, not just for the pipes, but for everything. Thanks. And I think.
So, I'm sorry. So, if, if we were to have the study, and I guess another reason why to do the study, and, and they, they agree totally with what, what you guys, what these guys said, you know, it's an accident waiting to happen, it's a really severe case. Would there be any way to kind of fast track the process? Like, would the state look at that and say, you know what, you know, maybe we won't take six months to approve it, we'll do it in a month?
It's possible.
Could we do that with, with, with that evidence?
Yeah, I think the more we have and the more compelling it is, the better the chances. Because, you know, I've been in situations where you've had to call and say, this is an emergency situation. And I can tell you, they respond very quickly. And, you know, you can't abuse that because they're going to make sure that you're talking about what, a real emergency. But if we're saying that we could potentially not have heating during the winter season, or we would have to use some kind of, I don't know what it is, system that comes in and hooks from the outside, that would be a real problem for running school. And so I think that, yes, that is possible. And one of the other things we talked about today, we had a pre-meeting, one of the other things we talked about are the bathrooms. We have the boys' and girls' bathroom that we think is as urgent, if not more urgent than this, because we need to get in there and do something right now. And so I guess the question is, are we going to wait? And I, I asked the question today, should we be, can we wait? And the answer I got was, maybe we can. And so we have to be, we have two bathrooms, a boys' and a girls' bathroom that needs to be addressed immediately. And so that's something we have to also talk about.
So would possibly even moving up the referendum, like before May, is that even, is that a possibility?
If we could get it done, we would have to see. Once we get everybody in place, we would have to ask what they thought, if we expedited it, what the, the timeline could be. And we could run a referendum before the May budget vote.
Or is there a possibility to split up the projects?
Yes, that is a possibility. So, gentlemen.
Then you'd be hitting people with two referendums.
Well, something that we need to talk about is both bathrooms, the boys, I, from what I understood, was more in dismay than the girls'. The girls seemed like it could almost wait for full.
We do have some funding in the repair reserve. And so if it was absolutely necessary, right now we have it listed as kind of a, an estimate that it would be somewhere up to three hundred thousand dollars, which is listed here, which is a number our architect kind of threw out to us. So again, it's, it's a, it's a real, it's a raw estimate. It's not something that's solidified. But Gary or, or Mike or Tony, do you want to share a little bit about the bathrooms and where we are with both of the boys' and girls' room?
Well, Mike is eyeball the walls. He was in there. And it's more in the boys' room. Oh, this thing.
Same way.
So, Mike could use the microphone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There must be some kind of water leakage in the bathroom somewhere because, like, the boys' room downstairs, the toilet actually fell off the wall. The, the metal studs are all rotted. So I don't know if the water's coming from up above. I don't know where it's coming from. So, my opinion is if you're going to replace a bathroom downstairs, why not do the upstairs at the same time? Because we don't even know where the leak, the water's coming from. It could be rotted upstairs too. I, I don't know.
And what we're talking about on this list, it's called, it's just listed as elementary bathrooms. But we're talking in, we'd like to do like a full refurbish of them, right? So, to get just the, them in working order, is that a repair? Or is that, does it really need to all be refurbished at the same time?
I think they need to be ADA compliant, right?
That's like, that's the goal. But I guess I'm wondering is, is there a repair that we can do between now and bond referendum time? Or is that, that not the case?
It's been done.
You got, the repairs, the patch repairs have been done?
Well, the repair is, the water was shot off.
No.
Wasn't it?
It was.
It was.
It was. Okay, so it's back on.
Back on.
Laura, do you want to come to the?
Yeah, I just have a quick, Gary, when you're talking. Yeah, hi. Sorry, I was late. I just wanted to just, I've mentioned this before, but when I hear the estimates being, I, I understand they're raw estimates and estimates are always ballparks. But they seem really, really high, even for both, like, for two bathrooms, full refurbishes, at three, a ballpark estimate of three hundred thousand dollars still seems kind of high. I'm, you know, I, maybe if it's really a full, bringing it up to ADA compliance and, you know, really totally gutting it and doing remediation behind the walls and new finishes and new fixtures, that figure might become a little bit more palatable to me. But I, I just, it seems really high to me. So I'm just curious, moving forward, how the bids and estimates are arrived at, basically, so.
So, as I said, we haven't really even begun the work with the architects. One of the things that they do is they include the soft costs they call, they, which are called for a number of different things, but one is for the architectural fees, one is for, you know, anything that comes up. And he, and so they kind of, they give an estimate. These are just ballpark. And so, if and when, you know, we, we move forward and we really go through the, the process, you will get actual numbers. And they're going to be talking about what will be put in, what type of materials. And they, they give the whole list and then it goes out to bid. And then people come in and, and give an estimate of how, how much they would charge to do the whole thing. So, it's, it's just so preliminary, it's just to have the conversation. And honestly, if this is, if, I don't know enough to know that it's a high bid, but if it's, people, I've been hearing people say it looks like it's inflated. If it is, and then when, we'll get the actual numbers when we start through the process.
Would it be helpful to, I mean, we're jumping on the list, would it be helpful if we went down each item and explained what's going on? Because like, when I see bathroom renovation, I'm thinking tile, not that the pipes in the walls are rotting away.
Totally refurbish, gutting and, but I think the guys can explain that better.
But I mean, going, you know, starting off with like redoing the control system.
Yep. So the first one is the nineteen thirty-four pipe system replacement. Boilers, just, I know that there have been people that have asked the question, the boilers are not included in this. This is just the heat delivery system. And so that was, they were, the, the boilers were replaced in two thousand twelve, so we're just talking about the heat delivery. So is there anything else, gentlemen, that you would like to add to what we've talked?
That's steam to hot water. We're not, we're moving from steam to a hot water hydronic system. So, every, all these prices are approximate. Looking at a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, you know, these pre-bond evaluations and conversions were done by Fuller DeAngelo. And I don't know where the prices came up, but we've kicked the can down the road long enough here at the school and it's time to update the school. I mean, it's going to be costly, there's no getting around it. And boilers are fine. Mike's doing breakdown maintenance now, replacing pipes as they break. And we can't go on like that anymore. We need to fix it. And unfortunately, it's time for us to do it. And who knows what the costs are going to be. These are all approximate, you know, we're throwing numbers up in the air here. Until we have a true evaluation of everything, then you can have some hard numbers to see what's going on. Pneumatic controls in the elementary, converting to digital. Right now, there's air, air valves controlling steam, uh, steam valves that open and close, these valves control the heat down there. And that needs to be replaced. The whole pneumatic control throughout the whole building is outdated.
If I could just add, my understanding is pneumatic controls are no longer working and that instead of fixing an old system that's antiquated, it's just going to be updated with digital controls, which is what you typically use now. So again, these aren't items that, you know, oh, it's pneumatics, we want to have something better.
Yeah, this isn't a wish list.
Yeah, this is, this doesn't work anymore. It has to be fixed. We might as well make it more efficient.
Yeah. Talking about the replacement of horizontal unit ventilators with vertical units, I can't speak upon that because I don't know.
Gary, could you just say that the pump room issues, just if, if we're doing some of the things that we are going to be doing, that would become a non-issue?
Correct.
I just wanted to, to say that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right. Maybe Adam can speak on the.
I'm not sure about the.
Unit ventilators and vertical units with heating and cooling options. Is it cheaper to put standalone units in the rooms for AC? Because there was an issue brought up at our Buildings and Grounds about air conditioning in June and during warmer months. And is it cheaper to put a chiller with a condenser and compressor up on a roof and throw air conditioning into the new ventilation, these unit ventilators? I mean, these are all.
But that item isn't on the bond, correct?
No.
Well, we have, if you look at where it talks about the vertical unit ventilators, it says heating with a cooling option available. So, it's kind of been weaved into that. But I guess the question is, Gary's asking, is, is that the most efficient and cost effective way of doing it if, if we are looking to do that? And so, it, it's definitely there for heating. With some of the, the days that we've been dealing with, with our kids, it's, we just can't, it's hard for kids to learn. It's getting so hot in some of those classrooms. And so that's where, why we started to talking about the potential cooling option.
As I understood it, this was something that was a slight uptick from doing it with the heat. And so it could be expressed as a kind of an add alternate, so we could price it. If it doesn't affect how all the piping works, if we could price it so that we know, you know, here's an option and then we'd be able to execute it if it makes sense. Because these buildings are hot. I mean, it's, it's interesting that in, in the main school, that, for example, in the library, I think it's on here too, it's cooled by an air, by a window unit. That's not really acceptable. I mean, it's just, you can't, we, we had the last meeting there, the first meeting for this and there, and it was, it was hard to be in the room as an adult. So.
And that's with some air conditioning coming in.
That's with some air conditioning.
Yeah.
Moving on to the window replacement, it's a big project. We've installed safety hinges on the emergency windows so that they function right. Roton hinges were put on all of them. And they need to be done because they're a method of leakage when the sills on those windows now no longer function as sills. They just gather water and can create a problem or have created a problem.
I'm just gonna. I'm sorry to keep interrupting. I just want to.
Please do.
Explain the, the detail. So, the windows are part of our emergency egress system. So if there's a fire, the children need to go out the windows. The window, the, you know, the frames that the windows are in are rotting. So it needs to be replaced. And, you know, we can't just seal them up because they're means of egress. What he was mentioning with, you know, they've already put in a different hinge because kids could get their fingers jammed. But it's, you know, you know, the, you know, in, you know, managing buildings, you know, job number one is life safety. This is life safety. Job number two is asset preservation, which is what, you know, the piping is.
And then to add to that too, one of the other reasons why we're considering the replacement of the windows in the elementary is if you go into the rooms, the only way to get any air in there is to push out the bottoms. The majority of the window is not, is not available to open. And so you would push out the bottoms and you have a few, you have a few windows on the bottoms of the big windows that even allow air in. And when the sun is baking in through the day and you only have these little areas that are, are even bringing in fresh air, it gets extraordinarily hot, especially upstairs. And so that's something we're also considering. And we're looking at windows, we'd like windows that actually open. We'd like windows that are safe and we don't have to worry about the areas of egress. And we, we did do a, a repair that would make sure that they're, they're safe for kids. It's whether they're inside or outside, right outside the windows. But we also have a quality of life issue with those. But we also have a quality of life issue with those windows, and we have to make sure that we're providing the, the air movement and the temperatures that our kids can work in well.
And the teachers.
And the teachers.
They're the original 1970-ish windows, right? Seventy-nine.
And the lintels are rotting out, correct?
Yes.
You're talking about the tunnel? No. So that, I was going to say, this is the good news about these window openings, is that on the second floor, the, you know, it's a brick curtain wall, meaning that the brick is not, it's not the structural component of the building. The brick is hung from the building, it's basically a way to make a waterproofing layer. And the steel lintels, the angles that are, that are there that hold up that brick are right now in good condition. That's a good thing. However, on the second floor, because these aluminum sills are tilted back to the building now, because the windows have gone down, maybe they weren't properly shimmed or whatever, it's really saying, "Water come in." So that water on the, on the second floor window is now directed to the lintels on the first floor windows. So it's just a matter of time before the water gets in those and the steel starts to expand, push the brick, and then the brick will be loose. So before that happens, this is like a preventative maintenance, that's another reason to make sure that these windows are replaced. But the main reason really is the egress issue. Because it's not just about the children getting out, it's also about firemen getting in. And if they can't open a window because it's, you know, jammed in some way, that's a problem.
To add to that, on the elementary wing, there's an energy recovery unit that was installed with the renovation of '05 that has supply and return air, that does control the CO2 levels in there, which is monitored by the techni, or TBS, the Building Services that we use. So that is monitored, so we have safe levels of CO2. Window shades are part of those, the elementary piece. Stairwell, stairwell curtain wall and exterior doors. There are the elementary doors, correct? And outside of the elementary art room.
What's the stairwell by the, I think you're talking about by the garden?
Yes.
The blacktop, right? So when you, when you're at the blacktop, looking at the end of the, of the elementary school, to the left is the garden. The, the brick goes up and there's an infill, this is the curtain wall, the aluminum curtain wall section of that. And that seems to be in okay shape. In other words, it was, was not the door replaced in the somewhat recent past?
Yes. The door, I was confused at reading this, because a lot of the doors have been replaced.
I think that part of it is, and it even identifies it here as being, you know, not a consensus as to a need, because it's not as, as dire.
Right.
And I mean, if you were going to do it over again, there's no doubt that you would get a better price to do all of the openings at one time. But if it's not essential, it's not an egress issue, then I think that it can be postponed. That's one thing that could be.
The air handling units on the cafeteria. I think Mike can speak on that, because I think we've abandoned one. Or, those are heating units to the cafeteria, right? Yeah. The air handling units, I don't think there is, right? That's an exhaust fan.
You have, on the roof, yes, exhaust fan.
Yeah, to the cafeteria.
Yes, yes.
So those are air units that allow air in, but out?
Exhaust.
There's no fresh air coming in.
Okay.
So these air handlers don't exist, or there, there is mislabeled, is that what we're saying? Or is it the air handler is actually just delivering heat, not cooling?
It's, yes, they're heaters.
They're heaters.
Okay. That's for the cafeteria. And one of them has been down probably 10 years.
And that needs to be replaced.
Yes.
How about the one in the locker rooms?
That's just a, and the ventilation, that's all it is. It brings fresh air in, kind of mixes it and takes out the stagnant air.
And is that in okay shape, or is that something we need to look at?
They're not in the best of shape.
So those take in air, I mean, in the old days when you had, you know, a, a unit that went outside then, that was called, what was it called? I just lost it, the phrase. But you got an advantage by being able to bring in cool air in the fall and in the spring and, and bring in fresh air with an economizer, there you go. And so you could do that without having to temper it or heat it, but is that what that does then?
The next five pieces are climate control, which is probably energy recovery units. So the music room, multipurpose band music.
So in that band, there is a unit. Are we saying that's...
It's a hot water unit ventilator that I think they threw in at the end of that project, right? In the music room? Down in the, down by the side entrance behind the, that was an afterthought, right? As far as a heater unit.
Right.
Yeah.
But it also has AC.
You're talking about the middle band room?
The middle room, right? Is that, so we're not talking about that room? We're talking about the big room?
Band, music and multipurpose room.
Where you have your board meetings.
Where we have the board meetings.
Yeah.
How is that, is that air conditioner up, is that in good shape?
Yeah, it's maintained by Silvestri and it was running a few weeks ago, yeah. So serving its purpose.
So then, I guess the upper music room is the other room that I was speaking about, that middle room?
Mm-hmm.
So the system that's in there, I know, provides air conditioning as well as heating. And we're saying it's not properly functioning, is that?
No.
Okay.
Needs to be replaced.
Those roof units were an afterthought also, right?
Five years ago.
Yeah.
So this just shows my lack of understanding, but, so climate control, I mean, you're basically talking about air conditioning and heating?
Yes.
So, all right, so the idea is that, and ventilation, right? So those, so having those, so a cooling for some of the rooms, but, but certainly not the whole school, that's what we're talking about with that? Right, okay.
I mean, the issue with this middle music room is that it's, it happens to be just below where all the heat piping goes through. So, so you're really combating the heat by needing to, otherwise you can't use the space.
It's enclosed, there's no windows, no exterior windows.
No exterior windows, so you can't temper it that any other way.
Thanks. Now, the cooling system in the gymatorium, is that something that we need to replace?
No.
So climate control ventilation in the gymatorium, what, what needs to be dealt with there?
The heat needs to be controlled in there.
Oh, so it's just the heat control?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. There's five roof units that supply AC. I have them under control now at TBS, so we can, like the other day for the dance, we only put one on at nighttime, so we don't have to put all five on at once now. It used to be on a schedule, being enabled and disabled. Now we can just enable the one and keep the others disabled for, which is good.
So should that, should this be on the list, or should we just cross it off?
Well, I think the, the heat needs to be addressed in there, because the radiators that are in the walls have been running wild for a while, right? The pneumatics weren't working and, I don't know, did we put Danfoss valves in there? No. So some of the wall units in the hallways and stuff and in the elementary library have control valves, Danfoss valves that were installed. And Mike's been replacing valves and actuators in some of the unit ventilators as they go to. So we're chasing after the heat system, which is up, it actually was working. We have all the pumps rebuilt down in the pump room, and we're ready for heat. I know the heat was, I had to shut it down in the annex today because there was complaints that it was too hot. I had it on in the morning and didn't have a chance to shut it back down.
And that's another thing that I think we spoke about, sorry, at the Buildings and Grounds, controlling how some rooms are so hot while others aren't getting the proper heat. I know, especially in the building down below, I think we brought up that those radiators, and I think what was installed was valves, the two, right? Okay.
Gary, can you continue? Can I just point something out? I know that we're going through the list and we're looking at everything as an isolated item, but I know that in some of the conversations that I've been involved in, we kept things on the list because it might make sense to look at them grouped together. And if we're saying, well, if we're improving the climate control in this area, this area works, but it's not so great, it could be more efficient, it could be improved. So although maybe something on this list functions, it might not function optimally, and so that's why it might be on here, where we say, oh, does it really belong on the list? That's all part of the discussion, and that's where, again, the architects come in to see, is it a grouping item? So that's why I just want to say, I know that we want to go through it.
Once a true evaluation is done.
Right, and evaluation needs to be done. And I know we are looking at it line by line. And so that's what we're going to ultimately decide, are things going to be removed from the list or kept? Because it's just maybe even cheaper to do things grouped, rather than say, this is going to be done, and then three years later, we ought to look at that, so.
This one, can I add to that? And the, the first three climate control items I know are on the list from June. The second two after that were added, obviously, more recently. But, but the other thing is that when you go through this bond referendum, you have the work done, and then you get to the end, and one of these rooms hasn't been dealt with, everyone's perception is going to be, "I thought you fixed the building." So, so you, it's also kind of important to make sure that it's clear that this is addressing isolated parts of the original building and not the whole, if we elect not to do these. So it's definitely more cost-effective, at the same time, there's going to be a kind of public perception issue later, possibly. It's like the people saying about the heating system, "I thought we fixed that when we replaced the boilers, but the piping wasn't addressed." Right? So, so it's important to be clear about what's happening, what's not, and why, so that it doesn't come back later that way.
And Paul, Paul, what you're saying, the, we're not going to do a bond referendum again anytime in the next couple of years, hopefully, right? And hopefully for not quite a few years. So it's also our job to think about not just what needs to get fixed yesterday or today, but maybe next year, like things that are starting to get a little iffy. Because what Paul's saying is right, we can't just keep having bond referendums, and we can't keep having this conversation every year. We have to kind of have it with a little bit of a forward, forward thinking.
On a positive note, the bleachers were put in, and there is a punch list on that. Elementary library looks wonderful, the benches are in and the rug is down, and that's in, I'm getting the roof fixed. We have one of the local contractors that's going to put a new roof on top of the existing benches and stuff, so that we don't have a 100-year storm that ruins all the beautiful cabinet work that's in there.
So there's a, sorry. Just to explain for the public, maybe they don't understand, right above all the new carpet and the seating and the new bookcases that were installed, there's sort of a bump out that has a flat roof. And Gary pointed out to us, who were on the initial building walkthrough in the beginning of the year, that a flat roof isn't the most ideal situation, but...
There was a patch on it, and putting tar on top of rubber doesn't match, so before we have an issue, we're going to get it fixed.
Well, we all, we kind of had an issue, right? We, there was, started to show some leakage, and so that's why that's got to be addressed sooner.
For some reason, the roof was never replaced.
That wasn't part.
When it was done, when, back in '06, I think.
My point exactly.
All right, install a drop ceiling in a 34 wing? There is a drop ceiling there, and that would just be a matter of whether or not the contractors needed to move the new hot water pipe system through there, or I don't know how that gets done, but that's just a matter, the ceiling is there, so it's a matter of where it belongs.
So, so are we talking about the drop ceiling because we think they're going to be running pipes through? Or are we talking about it because it's in bad shape?
The ceiling's not in bad shape. No. It's got to do with... Running water through the hallways at that point.
I, I was under the impression there, understood that, that the, this budget number reflects abandoning the existing steam pipes and putting in new pipes. Right? So we're not trying to fix those old pipes, it's new pipes. And this ceiling would help to conceal that.
Yes.
The news that that could happen above an existing drop ceiling is great, because that means that ceiling won't drop further, so there will be some, as it says here, better aesthetics.
Right, so the... So that's really part of facilitating the pipe replacement? Because the pipes are going to be, right, the pipes are going to be exposed, and we don't want the hallways to look like a mess.
Replace the seating in the balcony, install rug in this area. Part of the renovation work.
Is that the balcony of the auditorium?
Auditorium.
The upstairs seating.
And is there a reason why, I mean, I don't have an, actually, I don't really, why, why a rug? Like, is there, is there a rug now, do we...
There is no rug. It's probably acoustically better for the shows.
But, I mean, that's the kind of thing that I think that when we put this together, that, you know, I mean, obviously, the rationale for everything needs to be made really clear. Because, I mean, I can understand why the seating, actually, I don't ever sit up there, but I'm, my guess is that the seating is pretty old and could be...
Is it bad, though?
But maybe this is something that, I don't remember this being on our original list.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we talked about, there was a question mark, right?
That's why we said...
It is a question mark.
Yeah, I, I know that I had, I had a question mark on it back in June.
Okay.
Yeah, I could, I just have to second what Peggy's...
Diana, would you? Oh.
Sorry. It's just for the audience at home. Sorry.
I have to, you know, second what Peggy said, and I'm a theater person, but I just, first of all, don't see how a rug is going to help the acoustics in there. And I think it really, perception-wise, is really going to hurt the referendum, because that's the kind of thing that people are just going to stick to and not pay attention to anything else. And I think if the seating is fine, and I don't think it's anything that people really think about. So I, I would have to agree that there's no reason for that to be on there, considering that we have these serious, serious problems, and that we want people to focus on those.
And can you remind me what the ONB column means in this list, right? So there's a location, then ONB, then cost effectiveness, what does that mean, ON?
It, it's actually cut off when the, it should say ONBCS, which is the Building Condition Survey that was done in.
Oh, that's, that's...
Then you're putting it on the bond.
Oh, that's a really, so that, and that then gets at the same issue, like, that's a really, I think, to, to the extent that we can have those filled in for everything would be, would be great. Because, yeah, I mean, and I think, I mean, it would be great to think of this almost as, I don't know how you do this kind of thing. But, and needs and wants are for us to recognize that maybe it's a, it's a living document, right? Like, there, it seems like pretty quickly, like, going in, especially to the extent that this is going to be made to the public, what are the things that are, we're really... to the public, what are the things that are, we really are the highest priority right now, right? So the bathrooms. We understand that there, we're going to do the survey of the pipes, but for now, there's everything to lead us to believe that the pipes, like, and we can change, I mean, I'm sure you are changing this as we go through.
After every meeting.
But, and it must be hard to keep track of, but to the extent, you know, it's so hard because it's not like people aren't doing lots and lots of work. We know that's the case, but you know, somebody goes online and picks it up for the first minute and we want to make sure, to the extent possible, that the questions people might have are being addressed. We don't want it to be raising, you know, doubts.
So not to beat this auditorium seating to a... But there are a couple of things about it. One is, I suspect it's on here for a reason, so I don't know. I can't, I can't attest to the condition of that seating. Somebody thought that it needed some help. As far as the rug goes, I would think that as a maintenance person, that would be a nightmare. And at the same time, given the kind of steep incline of the balcony, I would also think it's a safety issue. Because if it's concrete, you can kind of get a grip. If it's carpet and your foot catches on it, you're over that edge. So I'm not sure it really is something that one would want for either of those reasons. But I suspect the seating must be on here for a reason, so I don't know if someone can assess that. I mean, one of you guys can say they don't work or it's just too tight. Is that, is it just too tight to sit there? Is that the issue? I'm not sure.
I've sat up there, I can't remember any issue.
I think it was a discussion that this is probably going to be the only bond referendum that's going to happen for a long time. And it's, it's old, it's, it's not a disrepair, but they're just old. And they're aesthetically not all that pleasing, they're plastic. Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't even sure if they were plastic or what.
So I think that that was something that we thought if it's, if it pleases the group that is going to finalize this referendum, let's put it on. And if it's something that, and it sounds like it's something that probably isn't the best idea here, maybe we should just remove it. And it sounds like that's what people are saying.
Yep, let's count, let's cut to the chase. 1934 pipe system replacement. Boilers aren't included. That would be the most important thing.
But you know, at the same time, then just to stay with the auditorium, paint the auditorium, right? Like, that sounds like it could be, like, it could be extra. But we know from looking in there recently that the paint's peeling, right? And we don't need, our kids don't need to go to school. We don't need to be in a school that has paint, you know, peeling paint. And so it's not, you know, not everything's, a lot of these things are important.
Probably back in '96. That's what I do remember.
I mean, I'm almost okay with trying to come up with a figure. Maybe not, I agree, the rug would be a terrible idea. Maybe acoustical absorption panels, you know.
Well, they tried that, they've added those. And that is a very bright space, so I can imagine that carpet might do that. But actually, I think that filled seats absorb as much or more than carpet on the floor.
I was just saying that to sound important.
So am I moving that to possible future items? I think you're deleting the rug portion. The landing seating and balcony, I think it'll go in parentheses somewhere in case we have extra money.
Possible to the trinket area.
To the, yeah, to the paint.
So painting the auditorium is important. Ceiling tiles in the annex building, they do need to be abated. In the Mabel Merritt Building, that's definitely part of it.
Was that just in the fireplace room?
It's the whole first floor.
Does something, I'm sorry, does something like painting part of the school, is that, would that go in a referendum or is that something you'd handle out of the R and M budget?
That's a pretty steep bill for a place like the auditorium. I mean, we do our normal painting over the summer and, you know, we kind of have a rotating schedule. But something like the auditorium is pretty costly.
You would probably need to bring lifts in. That's probably the expense, I would assume, would be lifts and...
Was the gym painted this summer? I know there's talk about it, but no.
The big gym?
Yes.
No.
There was talk about that before the bleachers went in, right? But it didn't happen.
Correct, it didn't get done.
Was there, was there an estimate on that, is really what I'm getting at?
Does it need it because the lift's here?
Actually, scoreboards are supposed to be coming soon. And where the old one is, I am going to probably have to paint that. And we're looking at, at least painting the one wall before we put all the banners and move the scoreboard. So I'm going to put new flags up and clean it up prior to the basketball season. Or hopefully as soon as possible.
We have somewhere to go.
Hot water heaters in the main building are nearing their end of their life. Mike can speak on that, if it's... That being said, would it be part of tying it into the new hot water pipe system? I mean, that's...
What's cost efficient?
This can be incorporated to the steam hot water project.
Are they direct or indirect right now?
They're direct, are they direct?
Well, we have a dedicated hot water heater to the kitchen system, which has a booster heater on it for the washing of the trays and all, so that they have to maintain 160 degrees when they clean down there, so.
I'm sorry, what are these water heaters for?
Domestic hot water. Domestic hot water.
So you wouldn't put them on the steam system because then you'd have to run your boilers.
Correct.
Right, right.
But as the least expensive line item on here, when you're replacing all these systems, it seemed like you could do $6,000 worth of new hot water heaters.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just get a new hot water heater. Don't try to pipe it into the boiler.
Upgrading the electrical capacity district-wide. Mike can speak on that. He's used every panel and filled them with breakers.
Yeah, we've been increasing the number, the amount of technology in the district to such a great level that we're going to run into trouble with our electricity.
I guess the next one's installing.
I have a question. What's with part of the Smart School Bond Act to upgrade the infrastructure?
Yeah, but that's not the electricity. That's the hotspots and the Wi-Fi and all the, yeah, all the pieces that connect to that.
What does it mean to upgrade the electrical capacity district-wide? Does that mean new wiring? Does it mean more surface? More power panels?
Power panels.
Okay.
You're bringing in an additional main panel.
Okay, that would bring more electricity into the building.
Right, so the next time they need to wire something, they would bring it to the panel.
If you go into a lot of the classrooms, you'll see six-way plugs that are plugged into 120 outlet and just not conducive when the fire inspector comes in to look at it. We need to upgrade.
So you're, so you're not just talking about a panel, you want to put more outlets in the classrooms?
If needed.
Yeah, we've done that with conduit and what else? The, what's that fancy stuff?
Wire mold.
Wire mold, yeah.
It's the fancy stuff.
So it seems like then, I mean, so you hire, like, they're probably, like, institutional electricians, right? Who understand it right there.
Well, no, I know you're an institutional electrician.
He's an institution, all right.
I meant somebody, what I meant is somebody who, not that you may have this expertise as well, but I meant somebody who works on developing institutional buildings, really recognizing that in modern high schools, you typically need these many outlets. Not that, I mean, you may well have that expertise, but I was thinking somebody really aware of, like, the field and what's going on.
Paul DeAngelo will do that.
They will. So that makes sense that a, a school, a school architect, that's exactly the kind of thing.
So we're not talking about just bringing in the electrical capacity. We're talking about upgrading the distribution within the building or at least looking at it.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And guardrails along Craig Side Drive, I don't know how to speak upon that because it's cited by NYSER.
Yes, so NYSER stands for...
New York City.
For insurance.
So there, you know, where the teachers park along the field coming up, there's nothing that prevents the car from going down into the trees. And this is a concern that, I'm not sure exactly where it came from, but this is what, something they cited. I know Mike was very concerned about this, too. Safety issue.
And I think when we did some of that clearing to make that little access, it just made things a lot more visible, that you can literally just drive your car beyond that hill and beyond the field.
Tony and I, Mike, we've been talking about taking that fence down that goes down to the field, cleaning that up, putting guardrail up. I think I've measured it, it's probably, I don't know how many times we've cleaned it off of overgrowth. And it's a project that we want to look at during the winter months, you know, when there's nobody around, just to clean that whole area up and put guardrail up and see if we can't get a donation from the state for guardrail or have somebody, or we can build something. We'll figure it out.
I'd like to do that whole section.
Yeah.
Right down to the football entrance.
Start taking those saplings down. There's some beautiful oak trees down there that aren't getting enough light, so we'd take some of the locust saplings down there and small sugar maples and whatever undergrowth there is, just to get more light into the base of those oak trees. They need to be cleaned up. That whole side of the field down there needs to be cleaned up.
I'd like to, Ken, if I can, cycle back to the beginning and thank Ann for the presentation because I know it was something we talked about before is the ability to explain this in an abstract way without having hard numbers and how difficult that would be. But it is important to be able to do it without, you know, since we don't have hard numbers, to be able to understand that. And the other thing is in terms of doing the next assessment of the heat piping, the maintenance guys are the ones who have the best sense of where, if you're going to have to do some kind of random or isolated testing, where those hotspots are likely to be. So, and it's, and in my experience, is frequently the case that the people who know the system best are the ones who are not consulted. So it's, it's an important resource to keep in mind, whoever does that.
I'm just saying, if that's what happens.
And actually, building on that, I really want to thank Ann for the presentation because for the first time ever, I think I actually really understand this process, right? Like, I really understand. I mean, I knew a band was a debt instrument, but I didn't really understand. And now I see, you know, that the bands are this temporary debt instrument that you use through the project until the state's pleased enough with it that it begins its payment schedule and then you turn it into a long-term debt. I mean, that was really, it was really very useful. Thanks. I now know the difference between a bond and, I really know the difference. I knew they were both debt instruments, but I didn't, I didn't necessarily understand the distinction. But that's, that's helpful to know.
I don't think you're alone in that.
So prioritizing your propositions as far as what we really need to do and then subcomponents of what is not immediate is probably the best way to go with the project and...
I just want to remember that there is one more thing on the list, which is just paving throughout the district. And the potential of putting more parking within the district.
And so what's then the next step? Is that something our architect does? The architect comes in and takes this list and does like an in-depth review and proposal for each? It's kind of tricky, this whole process, because it's hard to get any solid quotes before knowing if this, you know, would be passed by the public. So it's, right, Ann, you usually don't go out and get, you don't send requests for proposals out.
Right, the RFP or the request for proposals or the sealed bids, that's all really after it's all said and done, when the specs are developed. So, which is why the estimate, and a lot of times the architects go on square footage and they don't really know why they'll put a soft cost of 25% added on to it is because of the unknown. They don't know what's behind those walls until they open them up. And that could really add a lot of, it could be a change order. It could be another contractor coming in for something unforeseen. Just the incidental costs. And then sometimes, that's why you have alternates, too, in your project, is if you're under budget or the project, you know, there's a negative change order, then you can go and you can do one of your alternates. So that has to be developed in your plan as well. What do we definitely have, want to get done in the referendum? And what are alternates in the referendum that maybe we can afford secondary, but we won't need another vote for that? So there's a lot of pieces to it and the architect is really our next key step in this.
But the committee has already done a lot of the scanning through what are the priorities. I mean, that's what, that's why we have this current list that we just went through. Like, this is the priority list. I mean, we moved one thing off of it, you know, as like a, but all these other things on this list, Phase Two, general items, possible future items, those are kind of, at this point, considered alternates.
Correct.
Right?
And the top is really what we consider necessary.
And the top is the priorities, yeah.
I got to say, bathrooms in the Mabel Merritt Building need to be upgraded, you know. We're going to use it as a classroom. That building needs to be upgraded also. So I mean, these are general budget items that would, down the road some point.
Is that more aesthetics or is that...
No, it's a necessity.
So are you saying, are you suggesting that gets moved to the...
No, I'm just saying that stuff on that general budget items, it can't disappear because, and when the, when this building was built, we watched many items, change orders come down the road that were taken off of that initial proposition that didn't happen because of budgetary. I understand the boards have been fiscally responsible here for 30 or 40 years, you know, and hats off to them because it's a tough, tough, tough thing to do, you know. You're spending taxpayers' money and they want, want us to make sure that they're getting the best bang for their buck. And I think you have some really intelligent people here that will help with this group here to make sure this is put into place. And I've seen a lot of, I've been on committees where I've seen geothermal looked at down on the old building and the bell parking lot, putting a school down on the football field and putting fields up here. And just the way everything happens over the course of time, we're now at a point with that building that the pipe has to get replaced. And let's see if we can't get that done in the most efficient way. And hopefully, we can help in any way we can.
Okay.
Great.
Anybody else in the audience have any additional comments or...
Laura, did you, do you have a question? Oh, could you come up there? Well, I have one thought, and maybe this is already being kind of...
If you don't mind, if you could just, just for the audience at home, thank you.
My one thought was that the prioritization on this list that was described is really helpful. And then maybe that, and maybe this is already there, but because the boilers system or the pipe system replacement is at the top, but that maybe it can be reordered or reprioritized within that top list of essentials, what the main items are that are really urgent, basically the pipes and the bathrooms. I think that's what the consensus is. And then sort of maybe just, yeah, reordering the other items, both in terms of category and then order of priority and importance. of category, and then order of priority and importance. I think that makes sense. It's, it's late.
I agree. Maybe there's some groupings, as we discussed, or Ann mentioned, um, some of the climate controls might be part of the heating. So, I think we can work on a little bit more regrouping. Thank you. Okay.
I have just one question.
Sure.
Yep. You really have to go over there.
So, I just want to make sure I understand that if all things go according to plan, that this will actually happen this summer of 2018?
That depends on a lot of things. What we're hoping is the 2000, uh, May of 2018, there's a vote, and then we send it to the state, and then we're really dependent on the state and how fast they can turn it around.
That's a little concerning.
Yeah, it is. And I can tell you that every district that does this has the same concerns. Um, and there have been times where the, the amount of time has been actually much longer than it is right now, and we're hoping that that continues.
Right. Okay, so then the next step would actually be getting an architect involved and actually getting some concrete numbers and putting this ball start running.
Right.
I'm done. Should I just take this off, just in case?
So, Dr. Bowers, you had said at one point that if it's an emergency, um, infrastructure issue, that you can get emergency funds from the state.
Well, it's not emergency funds, it's emergency approval. They expedite the approval process.
What I don't understand is why wouldn't this be, this seems to be the perfect case for expedited approval.
And you can actually, they may give you different, um, numbers, they, they give you different numbers, construction numbers. And sometimes, one referendum can have multiple, if you're really expediting part of it, and the parts that aren't emergencies will go through the normal review process. And it's very possible we may be looking to expedite some of these. And I can say, um, probably the two that I would see as real candidates for this would be the bathrooms and the pipes. And so, yes, once we get the, once we have the information that we can send to them, but that's where we are right now, where we have to start putting that together. And then it would be my responsibility to call up and speak to somebody there and say, "These are real problems, and we have to push these ahead."
Can that happen before the referendum? Can that happen with the assessment of the condition of the pipes?
Well, it depends. Um, if we have the funding, if we're not looking for funding, but for something like the, the bathrooms, yes, it might be possible. I don't think with something as extensive as the pipes. Have you ever seen something with that? Because we don't have the funding for that right now. We could, we could come up with the funding for the bathrooms, but we couldn't come up with that much money for the pipes.
And the expedited, the request for expedited, um, approval, wouldn't that bring you the funds faster?
Yeah, and we, it would, yes. We would go through the whole process, and they would have, um, we would have one that's kind of an emergency situation referendum, and we would have one that's, that's, goes at the normal pace. But they would not put everything, um, in the emergency, just the things that were absolutely necessary. But I think we could make a case for that.
For the pipes.
For the pipes and for the bathrooms.
That's it. I have one last question.
Everything on here is gonna be under one project, and they're hoping to do this when the kids are not in school.
Um, yes, some, some we may be able to do, um, but that really would, would have to be, there has to be a lot of understanding.
I mean, windows...
No, you couldn't do that with kids.
I mean, all this stuff. So, the likelihood of all this getting done within a summer is slim to none. So, then, the extra cost of misplaced children and grounds recovery and erosion, all the things that happen with regular, is, all that's gonna be factored into these numbers as well?
Yes, and that's where the soft costs come in.
Okay. Actually...
Uh, if, if I might, just, just kind of related to that point, so, in addition to prioritization, could there be, will there be some discussion of the schedule and phasing? I mean, yeah.
But that comes from the architect.
Yeah. And it would probably happen over the course of maybe several different summers, right? The whole list.
We would have to look at, they would, they would phase it for us.
Yeah.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, we'll move on, on the agenda. More than welcome to stay. I know it's getting late. Thank you all, very much appreciated.
Have a good night, thank you.
Night, thank you. Rearrangeing mics?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Thanks, good night. Night.
Good night.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving down to item F, correspondence. This is the letter from Mr. Thomas Campenile, reassuring us that, um, the audit committee has reviewed the external report, and everything is in good order, shape. Thank you, Tom, once again. Moving on to consent agenda financial, um, may I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? On here is...
All right, I just wanted to say that the, um, I don't know if you mentioned it earlier, I don't remember if you did. The Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs, we were talking about using them for our superintendent search, and I just wanted to let the public know that that is not, I would, I don't want to call it a free service, but I would call it an already paid-for service with our BOCs membership that we are renewing in this.
For the most part, most expenses, um, for the search would be covered through our Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs contract. There are some additional minuscule costs, um, but for the most part, their services for the search are provided along with our membership.
With our membership, yeah.
Thanks, Jen, for bringing that up. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, any discussion or question?
Diana, can you just tell us a little bit about the new clubs?
Well, the new clubs, um, the identity club has actually been in existence for a number, for two years at this point, and now it's phasing into a regular club. Um, and one of the things that we recently did is we modified Schedule B in the teacher's contract, and so, we were able to take some clubs that were in there that no longer exist and start putting in clubs that do. And the identity club is one. And so, this is something that's gone through the process, but we did not approve it at the, at the board level. So, we're bringing in some clubs that have gone through the process. Um, last year, we did, in the budget process, we talked about including a middle school coordinator for both humanities and math, and the math, science, and technology.
So, that's our clubs, it's stipends.
Those are stipends, one is identity.
Trying to figure out what MST was.
Yeah.
So, identity is a club.
Right.
MST is...
Math, Science, and Technology. Or it's called STEM or STEAM and STREAM, I mean, there's so many different acronyms.
So, those are just stipends, so they're just kind of grouped together here?
Yes.
That's what I couldn't figure out.
It's all the new, it's the positions that we talked about that we didn't actually approve, so now we're, we're getting them into the contract.
Got it. I was just confused, because they were grouped together.
Yep.
Okay. And when you talked about the process for the club, could you just explain, I think we've talked about this before, um, initially, the club has to go through a sort of trial period.
Right, and so, um, our faculty advisors volunteer for a period of time, and to make sure that there's interest and there's continued interest. And actually, this is one that has grown by leaps and bounds over the last couple of years. So, um, we just make sure that if we're going to approve something, it's really something that the students want, and that they're going to vote by joining. And so, that's the direction we go.
Great, thank you for clarifying. Okay, any further discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any communication from the public? Wow, we've got, uh...
Cleared out.
You're all by yourself over there.
Okay, if there's, uh...
Don't think we are secure.
There's no further discussions or comments. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.